Good evening, I'm going to call the Planning Commission meeting for Monday, July 27th to order. If everybody would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the very public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll run through tonight's agenda. We'll have the public hearing for a conditional use permit, then a site plan design review for Discount Tire Company, a public hearing for the Unified Development Code, other business, and then adjournment. So, starting off, the minutes from the last meeting, if I could, I would entertain a motion to approve those.
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Wallace and a second from Commissioner Phillips. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And just to run down the procedure for the public hearing, I will open the public hearing, ask council for exhibits, ask for the staff presentation, ask for questions from the commissioners, then the applicant will make their presentation, then we'll have people speaking in favor of the petition, people speaking against, then we'll have more open discussion among the commissioners, and then I'll close the public hearing, and then we will vote on the petition. So with that, I would open the public hearing for the conditional use permit, CUP-07-15-4873 for Discount Tire, and I would ask for the exhibits from council.
Mr. Chairman, the city has eight exhibits. Number one is a staff report with attachments. Number two is the affidavit of publication in the Blue Springs Examiner. Number three is the application with attachments. Number four is the 185-foot notification map. Number five is a list of names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Number six is a copy of the letter sent to those property owners. Number seven is Title IV, Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. Number eight is the 2003 Comprehensive Plan. Mr. Chairman, those are all of the exhibits that the city would offer into the record at this time.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. And I will note to the commissioners, Matt is going to be making the presentation for the conditional use permit as well as a site plan and design review, and then we'll vote individually on those afterwards. So, saying that, I will let staff make presentation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Before you, there are two requests associated with the development of Discount Tire at 914 Southwest 7 Highway, which is located approximately 325 feet south of 40 Highway. This site was platted in 2007 after the former Walmart site was subdivided into smaller parcels. The site is located north of Taco Bell, and there is an additional lot located between the subject property and Kennedy's Jewelers, which is located at the southeast corner of 7 and 40 Highways. The first request is for a conditional use permit to allow vehicle repair limited on this property. The applicant is proposing to develop a retail tire and wheels sale store that also provides installation and maintenance services. There will be six service bays on-site. Installation and maintenance services for automobiles is classified as vehicle repair limited by the UDC and requires a conditional use permit to be approved for the use in GB general zoning, general business zoning. Normal business hours for Discount Tires are 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 on Saturday, and they're closed on Sundays. All tires and equipment are stored inside of the building. Here's a look at the existing site. Right now, it's just a former parking lot that was utilized for the Walmart site. Hardly ever, there's hardly any one ever parked on there. This is what the proposed site looks like. They will be developing a 7,373-square-foot building with the associated parking. So the second request is for the site plan design review for this site, and as I mentioned, it's a 7,373-square-foot building with a sales showroom in the front portion of the building that will face 7 Highway. And then, here's the colored rendering. You can see there in the upper right-hand corner is the front, so it's mostly a glass front, so people can see inside of it from 7 Highway. And then, on the south-facing facade is where the garage bays will be. Each one of those are 22 feet wide and will accommodate two service bays within each overhead door. The colors of the doors will match the color of the adjacent walls to kind of blend in with the building. And the proposed building design and materials meet UDC guidelines. Exterior materials will be a mix of EPAS, split-face block, and brick veneer. And then, the applicant has also provided kind of a color sample here with the materials that kind of give you an idea of what the materials will look like. They also have varying parapet walls, cornices and pilasters that will provide horizontal and vertical elements. Access to the site will be provided through existing access easements to the north, east, and south. There will be no direct access to Southwest 7 Highway. The site needs the required number of parking spaces, which requires 18 spaces. They provided 26 on-site with an additional 13 spaces available to the south that are shared with Taco Bell. A 6-foot sidewalk will be installed per MoDOT's requirements along Southwest 7 Highway, and the site does meet landscaping requirements. In addition to the 15-foot landscape buffer along 7 Highway, they will also be curbing and installing a landscape buffer along the north access drive. And overall, the amount of impervious surface on the site will be reduced with this request, and they will be increasing open space and landscaping. And then, for the trash enclosures, they will match the building material with the CMU split-face block with painted steel gates. And then, all roof-mounted and ground-level equipment must be screened visible from Southwest 7 Highway. There is an electrical cabinet on the north facade that they're proposing to screen with landscaping. If, for some reason, the landscaping is not sufficient, staff has made a condition that any structural screening there match the building in color and material. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit, subject to the five conditions in the staff report, and staff recommends approval of the site plan design review, subject to the five conditions in the staff report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the commissioners? I guess not.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation? And could you please state your name and address and be sworn in, please?
My name is Kyle Tipis. I'm with Cal Valley Engineering. My address is 14700 West 114th Terrace. If you may recall, Discount Tire was before you recently also in regards to a property that was off of I-70. That property, due to their financial model, it's not feasible at this time. They are maintaining ownership of that property, though, so that way, at a future date, when the demographics of the area make that property more financially sound, then they may proceed with that property. They have located this property. This property does work great within their model. They're very happy to be in the city of Blue Springs, and we, the development, has been working with city staff and MoDOT, and we are in favor of city staff's recommendations. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the applicant? I guess not. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I will ask, but it doesn't look like it. Are there any witnesses that would like to speak in favor of the petition? Any that would like to speak against? Okay. Any other comments or questions from the commissioners? Okay. Going once. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open it back up up here for discussion or motions or comments.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Yes, Mr. Wallace.
I'll make a motion for approval of the conditional use permit, CUP-07-15-4873 for Discount Tire, with the five, with the five staff recommendations.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Duhon. And this will be a roll-call vote.
Planning Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner McCall?
Aye.
Commissioner Appeal?
Aye.
Commissioner Duhon?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Wallace?
Aye.
Chairman Graham?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the site plan design review for Discount Tire, SPDR-07-15-4874. Is there any discussion, motions, questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Phillips?
Can I make a quick comment?
You can.
And I'll make a motion.
Sure.
Sorry, the first site didn't work out for you. I'm also a little bit sorry that you're going to hang on to it and not let somebody else come in and develop it right now, because I hate to see that area over there undeveloped. But, welcome to town, and hope this one works out for you. That being said, I would make a motion to approve the site plan design review, SPDR-07154874, with the five staff recommendations.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Duhon. This again is a roll-call vote? Nope, it's not. Not a roll-call vote, sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the amendment to the Unified Development Code. So I would open that public hearing, ask council for exhibits.
Mr. Chairman, the city has two exhibits. Number one is a memorandum with attachments, and number two is the affidavit of publication in the Blue Springs Examiner. Those are all of the exhibits the city would offer into the record at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Mr. Allen?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. Again, before this evening, staff is pleased to present to you the amended Unified Development Code. As you know, this has been an ongoing project for quite some time, and we are now finally prepared to bring forward to you the final draft of the Unified Development Code as it has been amended. So with that, I do have a PowerPoint slideshow we'll go through, kind of walk through the code, not literally page by page, but section by section. Our Assistant Director Jim Holly's also been instrumental in spearheading this, so I'll kind of point over to Jim to jump in with some comments as we go along as well. So certainly, Mr. Chairman, feel free to interrupt as we go along. This is kind of a dialogue as we go through it. We're looking for recommendation to city council for their meeting next Monday. Again, if there are any comments, edits, corrections, other changes, what have you, certainly would be welcome to hear those and respond to those here tonight. All right, just a little brief background. We, this is kind of step three in a multi-step process to bring the amended Unified Development Code to fruition. The steering committee for the conference of plans, which you see there in the background, also helped review the Unified Development Code. We went before them several weeks ago. We then went to the Development Advisory Commission, since this does impact, obviously, the development community. So they provided their recommendation for approval going forward here. That was last Monday, so now this Monday, we're before you and hopefully bring that forward next Monday to the city council. So, we always like to say, welcome to your new UDC. It's an entirely new addition, as it were, of the UDC. It is utilizing a lot of the same kind of section formatting, numbering, zoning district labels, so on and so forth. So we're not going through rezoning the city, not doing anything that dramatic or impactful in that regard, but we are moving forward with kind of a reformatted, redesigned UDC. Again, the focus is on simplifying the development approval processes. That was kind of the call charge to staff as we went forward with the conference plan and then the companion Unified Development Code update. So we're looking at combining several development processes, looking at more of a menu. You'll hear me overuse that term probably a lot tonight, menu of design options regarding building design, open space, landscaping, and such. And the kind of tagline here that we are promoting is, "You meet it, you build it." That's the intent, is that be more prescriptive in the code to the point that somebody, if they can, developer, builder, property owner, business, meets the standards in the Unified Development Code, they just go forward to the building permit process as much as possible. So again, this does serve as companion to the conference plan in that it emphasizes the ideas of places and spaces. As you've read through this, I'm sure you noticed a lot of the same kind of terminology that came out of the conference plan as well. So it is integrated more directly perhaps than even previous versions of the UDC and conference plan. So let's just go through a tour of the changes. Section 401, and again, a lot of this was highlighted in your memo. So there's a cover memo provided by Jim. Again, it's not quite three pages long, and this really kind of hits the same kind of points on that. So, we won't stay too long on these, but certainly jump in if you have any questions or comments. Update the dates, of course, in this, emphasizing, again, talking about grandfathering current developments, that's where this occurs. And again, looking at consistency of terminology throughout that as well, updating things from 1996 to today. 402 talks about all the review and decision-making bodies, yourself included, one of those being the Historic Preservation Commission, another being the Downtown Review Board. One thing that was recommended from both groups was to include a Historic Preservation Commission member to, on the Downtown Review Board, trying to move forward and integrating those two areas in the city a little bit more seamlessly. As part of that, we're looking at moving ahead with some conservation districts. That's a result of the 2013 Historics, Historic Resources Survey that was done, and recommended to have conservation districts, one of those being kind of the commercial downtown area. As it stands now, it's not currently, again, a historic district, but there's a recommendation to make a conservation district, so again, not to belabor that, but again, just updating some of those changes that have happened in the last 10 to 20 years. So again, some of the major areas of change, starting with section 403, that's development review procedures. There's just a large-scale reorganization of this chapter, summary and procedures. Again, we can kind of pull these pages up if we need to kind of go through those, but the idea is to provide something a little bit more kind of one-page, or as it were, with development procedures. It's, there are a lot of different little icons related to that, but hopefully it's something that's a little bit more easy to follow than going section by section throughout the entire code to figure out what I need to do next with a certain type of project. Focus now is on planned developments, kind of getting rid of the concept of a PUD in terms, I guess, or in language, still utilizing that concept, I guess I should say, in the label of planned developments. Site plan design review, let me back up. Planned developments, we're also looking at not just commercial but residential. So up to this point, we have, you know, PROs, which you're familiar with, planned residential overlays. We have PUDs, which are more commercial, and the idea is to make them more, I guess, singular in their approach and process and such, and therefore looking at it as a planned development and not really be two separate segregated processes. Site plan design review has some new thresholds. I'll get into that a little bit. Let's go through here. I should, oh, this is probably good as place as any, you think, Jim, in terms, talking about those thresholds. As it is now, site plan design review is required for anything over 750 square feet. There's a lot of input through this process over the last year, putting this together, that that was quite a low threshold, especially in relation to a lot of other communities. For example, looking at moving forward with 25,000 square feet, so that's quite a change. Sounds quite massive to move to that, but again, trying to put a lot of the things that, as you saw even here tonight, you know, no changes to the conditions with Discount Tire, for example, all that is going to be more prescriptive in this code. They would come forward, go through that, review it. You would still have opportunity to review this as a conditional use permit. So still, operationally, the planning commission would have those types of reviews in terms of, you know, how the, for example, that type of use, you know, where the service bays are located, hours of operation, things of that sort, access. Those are the types of things that this commission would still have an opportunity to review through the conditional use permit process. Well, that site plan design review piece would be removed and be a more administrative process based on that kind of threshold. Again, there are other pieces in that, and we can even jump to that page if you like to kind of walk through that, but again, you saw the materials, you saw, again, there was really no questioning or concerns with what they're proposing. That is going to be in the code. That is in this code. Those are the things that they would have to meet, they just would not have to go through the extra process or extra application to come before you to get that, essentially, that sign-off to move forward to building permit. So again, 25,000 sounds like a large threshold. It is. Looking at some more recent building types in Blue Springs, Walnut Street Business Center, if you're familiar with that, I think it's, Excelligent is out there now. Used to be a couple, I think, three different businesses located there. It's right behind Durvet, right off Walnut, just west of Amsterdative Parkway. I could bring up a picture if you'd like, but for example, you know, that seems, eh, not a very large building. That's actually 28,000 square feet. So, for example, that one would still have to come forward for a more public review process, just based on its size. So, again, we think our size of our homes and size of 25,000 square feet, I'm like, man, that's like 10 of my houses. But in terms of the commercial world, it is not that large. So you would still be seeing those types of projects come forward. Discount Tire, for example, again, would be the one that would not meet that threshold. So you, again, if, along with that, though, do want to mention that if there is any deviation, just like now, deviation from those standards in the code, they would have to come before you. So for example, they wanted to reorient their building and the, or use different material types that wouldn't necessarily fit with the code for whatever reason, because they want to meld with the existing buildings there, let's say, because it's a redevelopment area, they would have to come before you. So it's still, there are still checks and balances along the way. It goes back to that, you meet it, you build it. If you meet what we have in the code as a standard that's essentially been established over the years through the planning commission with site plan design review process, then you can go ahead straight to building permit and not have to go through the extra step here. Moving on, again, we can come back to that. Reasonable accommodations is a new section that relates to fair housing, ADA, things like that, that our city attorney has recommended that we have included in our code. So before I move on, are there any questions with the section 403, especially that site plan design review? We'd certainly want to get some feedback if there is any, if there are any concerns All right. Or if you want to say anything, Jim?
I'll just add just a couple of things. One, with the planned developments, one of the reasons that we moved towards planned developments was because the original intent of planned residential overlays and PUDs was to allow for developers to come forward to the city and request something that was somewhat unique or supposed to be somewhat unique, and in turn, for some items that they presented to the city that made the development more appealing, there were some forgivances that they could possibly get, for instance, setbacks and things like that. What we found is that, is that oftentimes, we've gotten little back that we really wanted to see within those developments, but it just seemed like that the idea of asking for the gives and not providing the takes were getting a little out of hand, and so that was one of the reasons we went to planned developments. Most developments now that go through, we hope go through just on the regular zoning. They meet the requirements of the zoning code, in which case, in which case, they'll just move through a normal process of subdivision, for instance, if it's a residential development. And with the new thresholds, I also wanted to add that we do plan over the next six months, once implementation of the ordinance goes into effect, of really trying to monitor, and we will be able to come back with you and kind of give you some synopsis of how many buildings went through without any kind of review, and obviously, you'll see the ones that need review. And we might talk about that number again and see if that number is the right number, if we want to go lower or if we want to go higher.
So just clarification, there could be an instance where a new development, if it met all the criteria and there wasn't a rezoning, would not necessarily need to come through this commission?
That's correct. It would go straight to the building permit process.
Okay.
And then staff would review it through the building permit process to make sure it met all the code requirements.
Okay.
Other question then? Yes, there's a comment. So our other committee, the zoning committee we have, you know, is this going to take any responsibility away from them?
The board of adjustment?
Board of adjustment.
Oh, sure, for variances. No, we really didn't address that. There's still the same variance process. Any deviation within here can go forward as a variance to the board of adjustment. They have oversight over the entire code, so they may actually have perhaps some more responsibilities in that. There's some additional standards in here that, again, may, like Jim's saying, we'll kind of see, that's the process as well that we go through with board of adjustment. If we're starting to see two or three, you know, in a couple of months, same kind of variance request, perhaps that's something that we need to look at modifying in the code. It means not a good fit that we thought it was.
But also, if they go through that variance process, obviously, it means that they really haven't met the development criteria within the code, or there's something in the code that they're not meeting, and so you would see those as well.
Right. Very good, yep.
Mr. Allen, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Do you have a handle on how many projects that were brought forward in 2014 that are underneath the 25,000 square foot?
That's a great question. I did not bring the annual report with me, but I would venture to say most of them. Again, we're talking about site plan design review. You know, rezonings, conditional use permits, even like tonight, you know, Discount Tire would still be here just because of the conditional use permit, but the site plan design review portion would not. So I would, I would say most of those would be. Again, it's really the, I say large scale, and it's kind of upper, upper-small, I guess, or medium to large scale. Again, you know, Walmarts are 60,000 to 80,000 square feet, you know, those are automatically going to come forward here. We had a few, you know, last time, Coronado Center, those were smaller, those are under the 25,000 square feet individually. If they came in as one with two buildings, again, they're looking at two buildings there, they're over 25,000 square feet. So that would be something that would still come forward. So to me, there's really, it's really trying to, trying to take these little smaller projects that can be more prescriptive in nature and meet these really basic kind of standards for material types, landscaping, things like that, and get them moving along a little bit quicker. That's been the feedback we've been getting from the development community, from, you know, mayor, city council, folks on the steering committee, even as we move forward. This is not unlike, Independence went through their UDC a couple of years ago, I believe, like, I think, 2013 or so, and they had the same type of update. ago, I believe, like I think in 2013 or so. And they had the same type of updates, trying to allow more administrative approval, again, administrative being staff looking at the code and applying the code like we do with the building permits to each project. So again, you know, plans examiners, when they get building plans in, they're not coming forward here for every house and things like that. That was the idea, is try to take all those houses out of the, out of the queue and just bring the larger, more substantial projects forward.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
All right. All right. Again, we wanted to kind of park on that section a little bit just because we know it is going to be quite a bit of a change. Certainly open to any suggestions, comments and such with that as well. 404, the zoning district regulations. Again, not a lot really changed here. We don't have any changing setbacks, things like that per se. I think maybe some minor, minor ones here and there, but really looking at, if you look through 404, we've added two new zoning districts. So I'll jump ahead just to show you where that is. You can see this table is in your, is in Chapter 404. And we have NL and NO, which are neighborhood limited and neighborhood open. Again, the idea here, and Jim, I think you explained it wrong before, I'll let you explain it.
These two zoning districts really are to align with the comprehensive plan, in particular, that idea of creating, creating commercial neighborhoods, so to speak, next to residential neighborhoods or servicing areas, so to speak. And the neighborhood limited really is designed more for the single-family homes, although it allows lower density multifamily in it as well as if that is adjacent to the commercial area. It also talks, speaks to connectivity between the neighborhood and those, those commercial areas. The neighborhood open is more of a multifamily or a higher density multifamily area, but the same, the same type of concepts apply to both in that there's high connectivity, high walkability, that the open space is a functional open space and a very visible open space, and that they tie to the commercial, the commercial properties that are adjacent to.
All right. Thank you. And again, the idea is to, like Jim said, you know, we're really trying to implement the comprehensive plan, these newer concepts. The idea here is to, again, allow some more mixed use, long and short of it, beyond what we've had to do in the past. If you're familiar with the old project called Lake Ridge Village, which has not been built around a lake remembrance, that was one where, you know, we had to put in all these different pieces of zoning, all these different zoning districts, kind of like a puzzle. The idea here is to try to let that be one zoning district as an NL or NO, and kind of mix in some of those uses and not be so hard and fast with where things go. So as a project evolves, changes comes forward for modifications, you don't have to go through rezoning and rezoning and rezoning each time either.
And for those of you that remember Lake Ridge Village, that would be a prime example of the NO, the neighborhood open district, because it did have the higher density type of development adjacent to the commercial, and certainly it was supposed to be very high, strong connectivity.
What I didn't mention here, but we'll talk about here in a moment, building types. This is really mimicking a lot of what we saw in a successful format in the downtown development code, where you have included building types that would be allowed in each zoning district as well. And that is also kind of an addition into this section. PRO, we used to say merged into the restricted overlay. Again, we're looking back and doing more, I'd say generic, but planned developments, you know, commercial or residential. As Jim mentioned, you know, taking those ideas of the PRO and still having them in the code, but in the more of a restricted overlay option. So folks can still come forward with any project and do restricted overlay, just like we did. Amsterdert Landing is an example of that. They're in the Amsterdert Parkway overlay district, but they modified that to kind of fit their specific context and their needs there. And they created an RO, restricted overlay. So it's still an option to go through with any project, but want to, again, make it a little bit more generic and not just focused on residential or commercial in a segregated fashion. Again, we'll come back, we'll get through to the building types here in a moment. Section 405, building use regulations. If you, you know, look through this quite extensively, you can see a lot has changed here. We started up front with the use table, put it in a little bit more user-friendly format than what we had, or say user-friendly, it has been useful to staff up to this point. But again, a little bit more updated, modernized version of it. Again, we've included building types, as I mentioned, in 405. We have that permitted building types, kind of permitted types table with images. If you look at 405 pages two through five, you can see that. I can bring this up if you'd like, but if you have your version there, you can see the different building types, starting with residential and moving on to the more dense options. The first image actually in that table, Table 405-010-1, is one I think we need to update yet. But we got these, I think at like the last minute last week from Gould Evans, our consultant. These are the one, these are some of the things that were just kind of left hanging out there until now. So that's, I think that first image we may have to have modified, but the rest are all pretty, pretty explanatory, or self-explanatory, I should say. We did include in here, I don't know if it's in this section, but it's within the code, that again, these are representative images. These are not saying you must build them exactly like this with a certain roof, gable, pitch style. The idea is, again, just to be more representative of that type. We have residential, non-residential, say minimum and maximum standards. So each of those building types has minimums and maximums associated with them. Again, a lot of this, I think, will be, it's, it's not something we just pulled out of the air. These are things that were pretty well-established based on research from the consultant as well as staff. But there'll be a little bit of trial and error, I think, with these. We'll just see how these things fit. Again, that's kind of the case with any code, especially a new one. But we'll see how that, that operates. Accessory and temporary uses has gotten a makeover as well. Really looking at accessory uses as more of a permitted type of a use, temporary use being more like a special event type thing, where it would require temporary use permit. And just being, again, a little bit more, hopefully a little bit more clear on the differences between the two. One of the accessory uses that we want to talk about is accessory dwelling unit. And I'll kick it over to you, Jim, again, if you want to talk about that a little bit. That's on page 405, page 13.
Hey, Jim. Can you check your microphone? We're having a hard time hearing you on it.
Yeah, okay, I think it's on. I'm probably just not speaking into the, speaking close enough to it. But to get to the accessory dwelling unit, this would allow for a secondary dwelling unit on single-family lots, excuse me, up to 750 square feet, no more than that. It would have to be, again, in the, in the rear yard, or on some lots, it could work in a side yard, as long as it met setbacks. Cannot go in the front, obviously. And it offers really a couple of things. One, it helps us meet with our HUD requirement for fair housing in that it operates as an opportunity for a homeowner to have a unit in the back that they rent. But more importantly, the kind of the mother-in-law quarters idea, if you have family and you're looking for a place to put them, this is an ideal scenario. Basically, the accessory dwelling unit, I should say, the accessory unit, a room is allowed now. So you could go in and build a room now. But what defines a dwelling unit is kitchen facilities. And what we found is that people who are interested in doing this kind of thing typically will, will look at building the accessory unit out there and they'll put everything but a kitchen in there. And basically, by the time they put the wet bar in, you might as well say that they have a kitchen as well. This just really gives them the opportunity to do it in a more complete fashion and sort of aboveboard.
Thanks, Jim. And again, we're, we're seeing, this is kind of response to some of the trends lately for tiny homes as a concept. Again, I guess, extended family staying with, you know, within a property, but not necessarily perhaps wanting their own, or perhaps wanting their own unit, but not, you know, wanting to be attached to the house. I always use myself as an example. My house has a fifth bedroom, which is attached to the house, and it has separate entrance and separate fireplace, and the whole works, two closets, the whole deal. So the point is, you know, taking that type of use and detaching it from the house and allowing it to be on single-family property. So again, it wouldn't necessarily be allowed to have frontage, street frontage. It's, again, rear yard only. Again, really emphasizing accessory dwelling unit. You know, no more than 50% of the size of the existing house. So even if you are up to, I think actually we're saying 700 square feet. I think we said 750 for other things, but we're saying 700 square feet for this. So again, if you have a smaller house and you want to put one of these down there, in 1,200 square foot house, you can't go over 600. So it's not just 700 across the board. There are some limitations in scale based on the context of the property in question. So the use table, just emphasizing that again, creating one a little bit more updated in terms of its layout and usability. Again, these are just some photos. We've shown this before several times, I think, even with the comprehensive plan, perhaps. Building types, these are residential building types. We didn't include photos. We included those drawings instead, a little bit more formal in the, in the code. But this is a little bit more kind of auxiliary, just to give you a concept of, you know, in the real world what this looks like for these types of residential building types. Here the non-residential. Again, really mimicking too the downtown development code in kind of that form-based concept. Again, moving on to 406, I'm glad Ben is here. He can answer some questions if need be on this. So this is subdivision design improvements. This is a lot of work that was put in by Public Works Department. So appreciate Ben and Chris and others who worked on this. Again, it's a full rewrite, so will not look similar at all. We took a lot of pieces out of here because it's being referenced now in the new design and construction manual that was drafted by Public Works Department. I think you have copies of that, Ben? There are copies here, if anybody is interested in that. It's going forward for its approval as well, concurrent with this, at the city council meeting next week. But is not something that, again, it's, I don't want to make it seem like it's out of sync, but the idea is it went through E D A C, Development Advisor Commission, and is now moving forward to city councils, not being reviewed by the planning commission, since it is kind of outside of the scope of the U D C, except for the fact that Chapter, Section 406 kind of points to it and references it. There's the alternative design and materials usage. That's a concept, again, that sounds a little bit new, but allows for some more flexibility, but it needs some standards to start with, with the construction of infrastructure within the city. We also provide for open space systems. So again, this goes back to that menu concept, allowing some additional options for development community to utilize, you know, design their open space, essentially giving some recommendations and direction, guidance for open space. Rather than like Jim mentioned before, with planned residential overlays, you know, we just get kind of leftovers. The idea here is, you know, even going through our review process here at Planning Commission, we're still getting kinds of leftover pieces. The idea here is to give a little bit more definition to those and allow developers to actually choose from some options, rather than just saying, well, you got to do open space. Well, what does that mean? Where do I put it? What do I do? You know? And a little jumping around here. These are street types. We reference those in the design and construction manual as well as U D C. Here's some open space types. I mentioned the page numbers you can jump to if you'd like, to see again more of the formal drawings, how this lays out. But again, here's some photos that represent that as well. Again, up to this point, we've really been looking at trails and preserves. I mean, those are really what we've been getting. Maybe you get quote pocket part, the top right there, but that's, you know, rare, I think. So the idea is here is, here are some different options you can utilize, where you can place them on a property, where it makes most sense with your development type. So am I going too fast, Mr. Chairman? Are we doing okay?
No.
All right.
Is there any questions for him up to this point?
407, thank you. 407, general development standards. Again, this is a large rewrite. A lot of pieces have been kind of cobbled together over the last 19 years or so, been utilized in the current code. So now, again, this is kind of a lot of cleansing, just kind of pulling things apart, putting it back together. So with that, we have access types. We're referring to those now. Again, referencing back to some plans and codes that we've had kind of on the shelf, but haven't been really utilizing much. A lot of this is spoken about in the 2001 Highway 7 corridor plan. That's where we first referenced access types. And we kind of speak around those at times, but now we're actually putting them into the code and, again, giving that menu opportunity to development, to developers. Same with frontage types. Again, some different options for that. We're hoping these are all inclusive. They seem to be, if you just look through those several pages and these sections of the code. But again, I'm sure that we'll see some unique things come forward that may need, as Mr. Wallace mentioned, you know, some Board of Adjustment variances or some review by the planning commission as well. We revised the landscape design standards, again, trying to update it. I say revise, more of an update to make it a little bit more, hopefully, user-friendly, but also, again, give you that menu options, expanding the menu again. We now have identified a little more clearly residential design standards, oops, and non-residential design standards. We took a lot of this from the multifamily design guidelines that are in the current code and applied it more generally with the residential, just essentially all residential design. You're not saying you need to have 50% peric in your house. It's just giving some better guidance and clarity for what's expected for most residential properties. Again, here's the frontage types we talked about. Again, giving, these are pictures. We have more line drawings formally in the code. So some other changes. So those are the kind of the bulk of it. Again, kind of raced through it a little bit, but certainly open to hearing some comments, questions, concerns. Section 408, we kind of took the leftovers, so to speak, and put it into Section 408 supplemental standards, floodplain ordinance, historic preservation ordinance, micro wind turbines, telecommunications, so cell towers. It's all things we've kind of added on as large-scale pieces over the years. We kind of put them into, not an appendix, but kind of at the back end as supplemental standards. So this is where you'll see things probably coming forward over the next six to 12 months, such as green, green energy. You know, we have the micro wind turbines, but we don't really have much, even through this process, of updating the code in terms of solar energy. A lot of our neighboring communities do, but up to this point, we haven't really had an opportunity to vet that. You may be looking at a task force perhaps to, to work through that. But again, that's where you'll see some of those new ordinances for new kind of trending ideas coming forward in this area. So again, reorganization of all the add-ons. Section 411, and Jim, I think you've been working on this up till last minute as well. This is interpretations, kind of taking all the ideas of definitions, what do we mean by setbacks, kind of how, it's kind of a operational, operations manual, I should say, for the code. So the idea is, well, why do you call that a rear setback? I'm on a corridor lot. I'd call that a side yard setback. Well, this kind of gives a little bit better definition as to where staff is trying to be consistent with our interpretation. So you can kind of go to this section for more than just definitions. That's what it is now. And look at kind of, we call it a glossary, is what the definitions are. And again, dimensional standards, the idea of how do we define, why do we call a setback a setback in certain areas and such. And again, really emphasizing it by use types. So we kind of broke out this glossary as well into more uses. So it's not just a running A through Z type thing, but actually broke it out in different use types. You can kind of jump to the specific type you're looking for. Matches well, hopefully, with the, the use table in 405. Again, we've done some general document cleanup. So like I said, there are a couple, like there's an image that's missing. Some of the headers, I think, are a little bit off. We're trying to get that cleared up in terms of our formatting, table contents and cover page. You know, it's kind of just last pieces are being put together as we speak. So that's the last thing that's still out there that you have not seen, but is, again, I would say is inconsequential, but it's kind of just the, you know, the glue to bind all this. all this together, so to speak. So to walk through the last, the remaining schedule here, remaining steps for you, you can see there, July 13th, July 20th, we have steering committee, DAC, as I already mentioned. Here we are tonight, July 27th, looking for your recommendation to the city council for next Monday, August 3rd. What does that give us? That gives us two months, August and September, to go before boards, such as Board of Adjustment, Planning Commission, other groups, development customers, kind of do some training and education information campaign for the next two months, to really put information out there, update our, Karen's already been updating our application forms, we have brochures, handouts, things like that, just to, to really clean all that up and go out and educate the, the community on what is changing, what the UDC means now. So what that does is gives us, again, two months to October 5th, we've identified as wanting to have the new UDC go into effect. As you know, our fiscal year for the city is October 1, so we thought, well, the first Monday in October is October 5th. Why we picked then versus October 1st itself is that October 2nd is an application deadline. So we wanted to give August and September opportunity to do education information and still allow folks to submit applications under the current code if they so choo, you know, chose to, all the way up until that kind of the last minute, October 2nd is a Friday. So then that would be the last kind of round of applications that you'd be seeing under the current code, and then starting October 5th, anything that comes forward at that point would be under the new code. So as I mentioned, kind of six to 12 months after that, I've identified there, kind of January through April, kind of looking last of winter and into spring to do kind of a review, modification as needed, do that kind of trial and error, just see how things go, and come forward to you with any changes that may come up during that time. So the idea is, that would be the only time we'd be doing this with the new code, but we're looking at kind of like every six months at least to start, to kind of do a full kind of scrub of the code, look for any possible problems, obstacles, bring those up kind of in a cleaning, kind of a house cleaning approach, and come before you kind of every six months for, for that type of update and cleaning, as it were. So you talk about the design and construction manual if you'd like, but that's it. That's the, the full, full story. Jim, if you have anything to add, but again, we appreciate everybody being a part of this process for the last, really about the last two years, with the conference of plan the first year and now the UDC the second year, and look forward to hearing any questions or comments you might have.
Any questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Phillips?
I almost hate to talk, Karen. First off, kudos to the staff. This is a monumental undertaking.
Mr. Phillips, can you, he can't hear you on the microphone.
I'm sorry, is that?
Maybe if I turned it on, that would help. Monumental undertaking here, and I'm, I was really pleased to be a small part of it. This is a long time coming, and it's really quite, quite an ordeal, I know. Could you briefly kind of go through the process if, say, six months down the line, we do need to make some of these modifications and everything, what's the, the process that's going to go through at that point to, to, to make those changes? Say we decide that we've let some buildings go through that we really wanted to look at or something like that, or, you know, something along those lines, or we've missed a whole classification or something we need to stick in there. Is that going to be a difficult process to amend, or is it going to be a real easy?
I'm hoping it says easy, oh, sorry, I'll let, hey, Mr. McDonald would like to speak.
We'll let counsel answer.
Well, if you're amending the ordinance itself, what amendment you're making will have to go through the planning commission, public hearing, go through the city council public hearing, and by ordinance we passed and make the changes. As was mentioned with the stuff that's in, what do we call it, the manual for public works manual, if you needed to make a change in that, the city council can do that by itself, because it's not in zoning type stuff. Is that?
So basically the same process we're going through now?
Well, yeah, of course, it wouldn't be quite as large a process. I mean, that's what we go through, have been going through for years.
That's what I mean, yeah. It's the same, the same process we've been going through.
I remember the sign.
It wouldn't just be, it wouldn't just be a simple discussion and let's change this threshold, it would have to go through the whole public hearings and everything else to.
Right, unless, unless maybe we were interpreting it wrong or something, but probably it would require a specific change by ordinance.
So it wouldn't be, again, there'd still be a time factor there to get that changed through, it wouldn't be something we could do overnight?
That's, yeah, exactly. Good point. Very good point, yeah, maybe 30 days, 45 days exactly from the time you identified and do the public hearing notice and such, and go through this process like we're going through now. Again, there wouldn't necessarily be a steering committee unless we're talking about more kind of task force type things. We're talking about, you know, green energy code, we've talked about food truck ordinance, for example. Food trucks are identified, but in the municipal code, not in UDC. You know, if it's a larger scale change, we may have some additional feedback, we may want to gather and group together and discuss that, but yeah, if it's more, like you said, where we missed a category, maybe we need to change this parking minimum or maximum, let's say. As Mr. McDonald mentioned, it would have to go through probably Development Advisory Commission first, I would recommend that as a review board, that would make a recommendation then to move forward, planning commission, city council. So everything essentially short of that first line up there would still need to occur. I mean, just the, I should say, two, three, and four here is overlooking.
Those things are mainly required by state law, the hearings and the notice to the property, not, well, notice the whole city are required by state law, so there's no way we can change that. For instance, though, our sign code is not in our uniform development code, because it's not a zoning type thing, and it can be changed by the city council. Things don't come through here before they change.
Right, okay, thank you.
That would be true of the public works book and, and.
As Scott was mentioning, probably the, the, I don't even remember what you just mentioned, but you did, food trucks.
Oh, yeah, food trucks are, yeah, some larger scale item, we may want to have a task force or something put together, let's say. That was done, for example, multifamily design standards a number of years ago, update to the telecommunications ordinance, those are, the mayor kind of mobilized a task force for each of those, they spent a couple of months working on things, went through the same process that we're talking about here, but just a small piece, not obviously the whole code. But yeah, it has been quite a while, a number of years, I think, since our last UDC text amendment is kind of how we formally, what we formally call it as a process.
Any other questions for Mr. Allen? Okay, thank you. I will ask, even though I don't see anybody, I will ask if there's anybody to speak in favor, anybody to speak against. Okay, I'll bring it back up here for any other comments, questions, conditions from the commissioners on the record.
Do we need to make a recommendation to the council on this?
I think I need to close the public hearing first, though, don't I? Yes. So seeing no other discussion, I'll close the public hearing, and then we can bring it back up and ask for recommendations to the council.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Phillips.
I would move that we recommend to the council approval of the new revised UDC with our congratulations and thanks.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second from Commissioner Duhan.
Is this roll call?
Yes.
This is a roll call vote.
And we are with Planning Commissioner McCall.
Aye.
Commissioner Peel.
Aye.
Commissioner Duhan.
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips.
Aye.
Commissioner Wallace.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Chairman Graham.
Aye.
Motion has been recommended to go to the city council. That brings us to number five, other business. Our next meeting is Monday, August 10th. Is there any other business anyone wants to bring before the commission? Yes, Mr. Allen?
Mr. Chairman, just wanted to mention for the meeting on Monday, August 10th, we do have two items. One is a PRO final plan for Adams Point Village, which is Mr. Sully's residential project just east of the golf course off of Coronado, and also the final plat, sorry, for Coronado Center, which is the project we just mentioned at Sunnyside and Coronado in front of Walmart there. So we're moving forward with that. Oh. And a. And a, the second final plat for Adams Point Village, PRO.
Oh, yes, same with the, yes, with the PRO final plan.
Thank you. And so plat and, final plat, final plan, Adams Point Village, and then final plat for Coronado Center. So I would say pretty straightforward, so no public hearings per se, but just, we do have a couple of items.
Okay.
As I've mentioned before, I think for the next several meetings, you'll be seeing applications, so appreciate everybody being here, and I know summer is sometimes a tough time to, to get everybody together, but appreciate y'all being here, and again, next few meetings, I'm sure we'll have some agenda items to continue with. Thank you.
Sounds great, thank you. Any other business anyone wants to bring forward? Seeing none, I'd like to thank Mr. McDonald for filling in again this evening for us. It's always nice to see you back. You're welcome.
I enjoy it.
Thank you. And like I said, seeing other, no other business to be brought forward, I will adjourn the meeting. Oh, I will ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a motion from Commissioner Phillips? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Haney. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now I can adjourn the meeting.